I'd like to call or order the Buckingham Planting Commission for August twenty-second. Please stand as Commissioner Shoemaker will lead us in our invocation and Commissioner Doria will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, our dear Heavenly Father, thank you for your blessings to our commission and our county over the last month since our last meeting. We ask for your guidance and wisdom as we do the business of the county here today. We ask for your traveling forces as we leave here tonight.
Same with him. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Commissioners. That brings us to establishment of quorum. We have six of eight, so we do have a quorum. adoption agenda. Nikki, is there any changes to the agenda?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman.
All right, seeing none, I have a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All right, all in favor, raise your right hand. That passes. We have approval of a minute for the July twenty-fifth meeting.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a correction to the minutes.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
I wasn't here at the last meeting.
Okay.
So, and the minutes have me listed, and I've already given that to the Secretary.
Okay, thank you. Any other changes, revisions? Do I have a motion approved with the one revision? I'll make the motion. There we have one revision. Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor of the minutes with the one revision, raise your right hand. That passes. All right, that brings us to our public comment period. Nikki, do we have people, any people signed up for the public comment?
Yes, sir, we have three individuals signed up. Teresa McManus, first.
If you would, please come forward, state the full name and address. You have three minutes.
Teresa McManus, District Two, ten fifty-nine Scott's Bottom Road. First of all, what I'd like to ask, and I've asked the Board of Supervisors this also, is that I would really appreciate it if you put your phones up on the ledge, because people read their phones or play, and you work for us for a couple of hours a month. And I find it very disturbing when people have their phones or are looking down, and we can't tell if you're paying attention to us or not. I think it is something that you need to do for us so that we know that at this time, you are paying attention to us. At Route twenty-four and sixty, where we have the center of Virginia, I almost got killed there the other day. Might have been a good thing for you guys. Why don't we have a roundabout there? When you're coming down sixty and you look to twenty-four, it's a hard look. It would be a wonderful idea if you guys thought or went out and drove there and thought about, that would be a great place for a roundabout. Okay, Pledge of Allegiance. Drives me crazy when everybody says it. I brought it up, the Board of Supervisors, I'm gonna bring it up here. Have you ever read it? There's no comma with "one nation, comma, under God." It's "one nation, under God, comma." That's how it's supposed to be said. Listen to yourselves. You don't say that. The only thing that I have to say tonight that is a little bit controversial is, the Board of Supervisors is afraid of being sued by Aston Bay. Are you too afraid of being sued by Aston Bay? That's been brought up a couple times. Here's the deal. You have to follow the Virginia State law, but that doesn't mean you can't override the Virginia State law. If the Virginia State law states that we can have gold mines, you don't have to approve the gold mines. You're afraid of being sued. Here's the big thing. How about being sued, and when the problems happen after the gold mine comes in? Boy, you really want that three minutes to go by quick. You, none of you wanna talk about that, but if we have an accident here with that gold mine, you can think, you can guarantee, not only will you be sued, there'll be repercussions.
Thank you, ma'am. Who's next?
Mona Banton. I'm Mona Banton. I live at three fifty-five Sharon Church Road in the Slate River District. My husband and I received the letter that you all were having the Dominion Public Hearing this evening. And, of course, you're not. We just got the letter, like, last week. So now, we didn't know that, that it was canceled, although I heard it was in the paper. My husband, the last thing he said to me was, "Are we going?" "Yes, we are." So I rushed home from Charlottesville, where I work, and get here with the price of gas, so here we are with no hearing. I would like to ask a question for the Board, especially the Representative for the Slate River District. And I know you're not gonna answer me, but I just wanna ask the question, put it out there. How did you vote for the pipeline? 'Cause that was in your backyard. And I know when they had the open house, you were very instrumental in telling me, you know, all about it, how, making it sound like what a good idea it was gonna be for it to be behind my house. So I just want you to think about what the pipeline would have done in your backyard, 'cause you don't live off of twenty. We do. And I noticed there's some houses going up for sale. I don't know if that's the reason they're being sold or not, but anyway, we are opposed to it. And if the one on sixty has problems, why are you gonna approve something that may have problems too? I think you're approving too much, too quick. That stuff on sixty needs to be fixed before you ever open another one. And I just feel like Buckingham is becoming a place for whatever misfit kinda thing that you think that it should have. I mean, I don't think we need all these solar farms, because it's not benefiting me. The power is going somewhere else. It's going to Dominion, to Albemarle, wherever else. It's not gonna help me who's on Central Virginia. So that's all I'd like to say. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, thank you.
Understand.
Right.
Understand, thank you.
Do we have any other?
Yes, sir, one more, and that is Donald Doria.
Donald Doria, fourteen five thirty-six, Scottsville, Virginia. Good evening. I, three minutes is kinda quick for me, so I'm gonna read rather than talk. Sometimes I get a little tied up when I get to talking, so I'm gonna read. It says, "I'd like to talk about something different related to the Pineside Solar Request." "We heard about their noise and the erosion, the safety, the air pollution, so let's talk about something that we don't know about." And that's the chemicals that are in these panels. "We heard last month from the Pineside rep that there are some toxic materials in the panels. These panels will be exposed to elements outside such as the sun, rain, hail, and wind. When these panels leak that material and some wheel, it goes into the groundwater. Remember, according to the S U P, there will be over one hundred and seventy-nine thousand panels. So some will leak upon installation due to improper seals when built. That's just the way it is. All one hundred and seventy-nine thousand will not be perfect. They are man-made and susceptible to defects. Others will have cracks and damages over a period of time that can cause leakage of toxic materials that will end up in the ground. If you watch TV, you've seen many commercials talking about if you live near or in Camp Lejeune from nineteen fifty-three to nineteen eighty-seven, please call the law firm of so-and-so, and you may be compensated for numerous different types of cancer that toxic water causes during that time period. Remember, that was thirty-five to sixty-nine years ago, and now we are talking about toxic water caused during that time period. We do not know what toxics will spill into the nearby streams here. We do not know what types of cancer we may get as a result of this. The law firms want to sue and get monetary settlements, but what about the people who have cancer due to this? What value do you have on their life? What goodness and money for the families of those who died from the cancer caused by these toxic wastes? Even worse, what about the ones so sick they wish they were dead? We do not know what lies ahead with the solar farms. We did not think lead paint was harmful or asbestos on, asbestos on homes or in buildings. What about the Roundup chemicals? We now have multi-million dollar lawsuits. All these things took time, but somebody had to pay that price to be either terribly sick or die. Why do we even consider adding another major farm, solar farm, to, so close to the one now approved? Some residents will live within a half a mile of over forty-two hundred acres of farmed exposure, and some only a couple hundred yards from it. Do they now have to sit and worry, "Will I get cancer from this?" We cannot answer that question. If we could then, why would we, why would we use lead or asbestos or Roundup in the past? So now, what do we really know about what's in these panels? Think about Camp Lejeune, and remember, the solar panels that I may approve also affect the lives of the residents that I represent. Is their health more important than the tax revenue? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, thank you.
No, sir.
That's all. Okay, I'll close the public hearing, we'll move to old business. First on the list, of course, is the Dominion Energy, but that has been canceled, the public hearing tonight.
Yes, and Mr. Chairman, there is one matter for you just to, to vote on and accept or not accept, but, of course, the letter that was accompanied, the packet and the documents for Dominion's case, twenty-two S U P three thirteen. Dominion has asked for a request to suspend the consideration of their case. That's their official request at this time. I know the last time we had that request from an individual was earlier this year in January from Mr. Yoder, proposed sawmill on Crump Town Road. You did make a motion to accept their request.
Okay. Do the Commissioners understand?
What is that again?
They're asking, Dominion is asked to have, suspend their application, which means we won't have the public hearing. They can come back in the future and re-initiate the application.
They would do that through the Planning Commission, correct?
Correct, it will pick up from where we're at.
Right, so when they, or should they come back, in their letter, it indicates that the company respectfully requests a suspension of the county's consideration of the project until the company notifies the county of the company's desire to resume the zoning process. So should they come back and, and make a request to consider the case once again, it will be here in the Planning Commission, and their request on the floor would be for a public hearing at that time.
Ask you, did they talk to you at all about why they actually wanted the suspension? Did they talk to you personally at all?
They did not talk to me personally about this request. This is theirs. I received it that Monday evening and forwarded it to you, I believe it was the very next day.
Was there any conversation with any of the Commissioners?
I did talk to Felix, but no, he didn't comment on why they want to, why they chose to delay the public hearing and ask for the suspension.
My move that we accept the suspension, the request.
Second.
I'd have a motion and a second to approve their suspension for this application. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. They'll grant it then. All right, that moves us to our public hearing case, David Wyko.
Yes, sir, the public hearing is for case twenty-two S U P three sixteen, landowner Karen Wyko and applicant Karen and David Wyko at nineteen oh four Patty Road, Buckingham. This case was introduced to you last month. It is Tax Map seventy-seven, parcel eighteen, and it has three hundred and seventy-four point nine acres. It is in the James River Magisterial District. It is zone day one, and of course, the applicant wishes to obtain a special use permit for the purpose of operating an Airbnb bed and breakfast campsites and event center, events to include but not limited to weddings, parties, celebrations, music events, concerts, file and photo shoots, film and photo shoots, I believe that should read, yoga, horseback riding, water sports, auctions, fishing, dinner parties, cooking classes, classes and wine tasting for up to eighteen hundred. Mr. Wyko is here with us this evening to discuss.
Okay, thank you, Nikki. Do any of the Commissioners have questions for Mr. Wyko before the public hearing?
Yeah, I do. I thought we revised that to fifteen hundred.
So, yes, sir, Mr. Kapczynski, I went back to that previous conversation at the introduction. I believe that our supervisor, Danny Allen, had questions and comments as well. I went back to a case in February for Carl Burmaster, because initially it was stated that we should make the case similar to that. Changes were made to the Turner application, which kind of results in the same nature of events for Mr. Wyko. That application went through with a limit of fifteen hundred people for large events, no, to exceed no more than four large events, and anything over three hundred, not two hundred, for the Turner. So, is that what you find suitable? If so, Mr. Wyko may have some conversation and discussion around that, but it would be capped at fifteen hundred people instead of his requested eighteen hundred. And then, in section M, it says applicant would be allowed to host up to four large events for attendance between two oh one and two thousand. It's actually three hundred people in the conversation regarding whether or not Mr. Wyko would be able to accommodate weddings at less than three hundred. If you look specifically at condition seven, this is actually for any musical or entertainment festival. A wedding would not typically fall under the definition of musical or entertainment festival.
Let me understand clearly. We're still, we're still talking fifteen hundred, we're talking two to three hundred for a wedding.
Three hundred.
Three hundred.
Three hundred for a wedding.
What was the thing up to two thousand? I didn't understand that.
Mr. Burmaster, that was originally taken from him, he has two thousand for his cap. That was a different case.
And that was a while ago.
Prior to your decisioning, yes, your decisioning prior to your coming onto the Planning Commission.
Okay, but Mr. Wyko had also agreed at the meeting, from what I understand, to those conditions, the conditions that we recommended. Am I correct?
I'm not sure that there was an agreement. I think there was discussion held over the number of events. He may wanna bring that back up this evening.
All right, well, Mr. Wyko, if he, if he.
Well, let's do this. If we're gonna make any conditions on this, let's go ahead with the public hearing, get that over, and then we're gonna have the discussions with Mr. Wyko anyhow, and we can address, address it at one point. So, if, I want, all the Commissioners have any questions, I'm gonna open up the public hearing.
I have one.
Okay.
I noted that it's the entrance. Has that, the entrance been revised through VDOT and taken care of? It, it, it said it has not been on my report.
Mr. Wyko, would you come on to the forward, to the podium, sir? If you would, state your full name and address, sir.
David Wyko, nineteen oh four Patty Road, Buckingham, Virginia. And I do believe that the VDOT situation was taken care of. I don't remember the gentleman's name.
Eve Snell.
It wasn't Snell, it was a different gentleman. Do you have it in the, was it Edwards?
Yeah.
Yeah, in the paperwork, he, he signed off on it. But if, I have two entrances to the property, the main property, and then I wanna have the parking, which is on the other side of the road, right across the street from our, one of our southern entrances, southern, yeah, southern entrances. The, the main entrance to the house, which picture you got? On the lower part of the screen, the driveway that comes out, that, that field, right, that field down here, if you're, that's gonna be all parking. Now, you walk across that into the other driveway, and, and if it's a wedding, you'd have it at the gazebo overlooking the lake. And they're also gonna have use of the bottom floor of, of my house as well, for the bridal party or whoever to get ready, such as being fit for them. But like we said, it's not limited to weddings. I wanna really concentrate on a lot of photo shoots, orvis, hunting, you know, magazines that are coming out, and they shoot usually six months prior to put it out for their catalog, because there's just a myriad of opportunity and shots to gather at that location. Richmond still does a lot of, you know, historical films and whatnot, and I've got three hundred and seventy-five acres to recreate any Civil War-type stuff going on. But, yeah, the parking, the parking would be on the other side, the, the west side of my property, and they would just walk across the street, or we're gonna have, have some sort of transportation, whether, you know, for elderly people to, to get across if need be as well.
Yep. That answer your question, Mr. Dory?
It just says, well, it says a traffic impact statement is not required, but then it drops down and says entrance will be reviewed during the site plan. So, is one contradicting something? I don't quite understand.
So they're stating in the VDOT form, it is complete, what they're actually asking, what they're stating to you is that traffic impact study is not required, and that his final site plan, which of course, at this time, the county does not require a formal site plan, so Mr. Wyko, should this permit be approved, his first condition, which is adherence to local, state and federal guideline, he will go back to VDOT and work with them. He'll probably contact me, we'll set up a meeting with VDOT, possibly here, at this location or Zoom to ensure that what he's going to use, if he needs any further engineered plans, VDOT at that point, before they'll issue him a land use permit from their office, he'll have to comply with their requirements. If he doesn't do that, then his permit would be null and void if he were to have approval at any point.
I intend to, before every event, of a significant event, maybe more than even fifty people, to be in contact with Billy Kidd and, and the Fire Department and VDOT as well, to let them know exactly what's going on on the premise that day. Nikki, would you mind explaining what you just said again? About, about what I need to do in order to get the land use? Is that something that I'm gonna have to do every time?
So, no, what your, your entrance or ingress and egress for this proposed usage of the property, if we go very, to the back to the very beginning of this, traffic impact is not required, because VDOT is stating that the traffic generated by this zoning change or development does not exceed normal thresholds. What VDOT is asking you in their comments is entrance will be reviewed during site plan supplemental for VDOT permit. So, this lets you know for the application that nothing further as far as a traffic impact statement being required, but you will need to go back to VDOT, should you be approved by the county, to obtain a land use permit for them to finalize and make formal your entryway and approve you for, for what is needed further.
And that's something that'll be kept with the?
They'll issue that to you, they'll let you know.
Once.
Yes, they'll issue that to you, should you be approved for this, then you would have to go back.
Do what I need to do for them.
That's correct.
Very good. Any other question from the Commissioners before we do the public? Okay, Mr. Wyko, if you would, you can go back there, sit down here. We're gonna call you back up as soon as the public hearing is completed. All right, do we have anyone signed up?
We do not have anyone signed up.
Mr. Wyko, would you come back forward, sir? I'll close the public hearing then, and we'll now proceed.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Did you understand, Mr. Wyko, the?
What she just said, explain, yes.
Or you got the entrance right. As far as what Pete was asking you, now, you're gonna be fifteen hundred maximum.
Fifteen hundred, four times, four times the season.
Four main events, correct. But we did raise the limit of the weddings to three hundred. Was there a limit, I, I, I'm sorry, Nikki, was there a limit on, wasn't a limit on those, right, it was just for the four main?
Or major that were in conjunction with any musical or entertainment festival.
Right.
No. Now, weddings are one thing and the other, the, the four times, what happens if I run through my fifteen hundred and I have another event coming up that might be five or six hundred, that's not a wedding? Is that just, I'm out of gas, or is that something that I need to?
Well, that would, yeah, basically, as we're saying, you can have four main events that exceed three hundred.
So every other event has to be three hundred or less?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, I'm okay with that.
Okay, all right. Any other?
No, you clarified it, thank you.
And I'm okay with the reduction too, because I'm quite familiar with Patty Road. I live on Shelton Store Road, so.
Nice to meet you, neighbor.
Yeah, hi, neighbor. So I'm excited about it, but the trap, the limitations for the traffic, I'm okay with that.
Okay. All right, if there is no other questions for our applicant from the Commissioners here, do we have a motion to move? All right, if there is no other questions for our applicant from the Commissioners here, do we have a motion to move? All right, motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Wyko, you're going to the Board of Supervisors next month.
God bless.
Thank you, sir. Right, that brings us to our second public hearing case, Rodney and Terry Banks.
Yes, sir, this is case 22 S U P 317, Rodney and Terry Banks of 568 Mountain Vista Road in Scottsville. Their application today is to obtain a special use permit for the purpose of operating an Airbnb bed and breakfast and one dry campsite. The property information for this application is Tax Map Nine, parcel 69. It's two acres and it is located at 15681 South Constitution Route, Scottsville in the Slate River Magisterial District. I did look in the audience. I do see that Mr. and Ms. Banks are here with us to help answer any questions and concerns that you may have.
Okay. At this time, do any Commissioners have any questions for the applicant before I open up the public hearing? Okay, we'll now open up the public hearing. Do we have anybody?
We don't have anyone signed up to speak.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing then and we'll turn it back over to the Commission. Commissioners, what is your preference?
I'd ask, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
When do you intend to start? No, no, no. Okay, thank you.
Other questions? I have a motion.
I'll make a motion and we move this case on to the Board of Supervisors meeting next month.
Have a motion to approve. Have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Passes, all right. I see that we have no new business at this time.
We do not, Mr. Chairman.
All right, that puts you on the spotlight for your reports.
I don't have anything pressing or new for you this month.
Okay. Commission matters and concerns. Do any Commissioners have anything they need to bring in front of the board here?
Are we still scheduled for the public hearing for Mr. Lloyd next month?
Correct, that's what the decision was in.
The meeting will be in the fourth?
Fourth Monday, 7:00 p.m.
Fourth Monday, 7:00 p.m., got it.
And that will be seven versus six?
But I don't remember there any being any
I tried, I tried.
I have to give you an A for effort.
Yeah, that's all I can say. Okay, any other?
Only the same thing about will we have any kind of training or work
Yes, the county administrator and I are working on finalizing some of those details. It'll come out to you in the form of an email, text, just to make sure I'm able to reach you.
Awesome, thank you.
There are no other matters. I have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, raise your right hand. We are adjourned. Thank you.